So that's already appropriate. But still, if you look at the school zone data.
Oh my goodness, so the horror of it.
Look at that.
It's even if you look up.
They're coming.
Hey.
Good job, Mr. President.
I am Tom.
I can turn it off.
We want to turn it down.
Something just.
What was it? I mean, numbers have come in different things. Like, I would need to listen to this. But then you know something.
We start on August twenty.
Yeah.
The inflation. I don't think you want to tell everybody.
Oh. Um.
Should I, uh, should I read this?
It is what it feels like, right? Yeah, exactly.
Tell him thanks.
See, it was. Yeah, he's here again. He was here last night, too.
I tried to.
Kathy. I saw each other.
Oh, because Kathy was sitting right here. I did see her.
She, they weren't together last night. No, he was way off.
So.
How long was he monitoring?
He was never monitoring. Oh, he's single. No, he was town council at the time. A lot of people think he was. He was town council at the time when he came as the elder. And he thought, yeah, I'd like to do that. And George Lee Ward. And George Lee Ward. I mean, this is my.
George Lee Ward. I looked it up a while ago. I get to like, he was probably thirty. Was this twenty-one?
Listen. So, I will never make any mistakes. And last night, I'm retired. And he told me after.
So, who was that?
Who was that for you?
Um, George, two.
Yeah, I mean, it's all kind of much. And he's.
He wasn't there. Three short.
Guy, guy, tunnel. He's a long man. He's a channel.
Yeah. And Channel Brown.
How long was that?
But you get.
No, I do really, I do really.
All right, we're seven o'clock.
Okay. Okay, guys, we're starting.
That's my Tom ends.
He's out for Lander.
Um, yeah. I have a defect. This is. I think I'm good with this thing.
Uh, if you, if you find one, I'll just. Find a few.
Somehow a manual.
These are your candy.
That's mine. Feel like I'm just doing a crusty on here in front of the cameras.
This is, I couldn't find the chest here, but this is the inflation adjusted. Um, it's not a nice budget. You can see.
This is actual, not the.
These are actuals, yeah, actuals. And this is that actual inflation adjusted today's dollars. So, I mean, we had it around six years in the run here.
Nah.
So, you know, we did have two light years.
That's why I was kind of hoping to just plow through last night, to be honest. Yeah, now.
This is sort of where it just, this is the start. It's starting coming off of gas.
That's right.
Okay, we're having technical difficulties. Kathy's audio is.
Can I help you talking about that one?
Yeah. Yeah. I was very impressed with the number of people who saw value. Because I always assume that people come in with like their minds going up about like, in this camp or that camp. Sometimes at town meeting, I'm, uh.
Yeah, you're surprised.
People, it doesn't matter.
Those are good on you, though, John.
So, you were fine?
Very nice, uh, bright.
Oh, very bright.
There was no.
There's no, uh, there's no vote.
I never.
But it's right up there, right?
I figured I'd, yeah, I was a political T-shirt. It's by springing in.
I know.
That would, that would, that's, that's good. That's good.
I know.
Some, they will. It's good, it's gonna be good for tailgating in the fall and everything.
He's, he's, he's.
He said they.
He was, he was like, yes, I'm a Republican.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and I, and I'm sorry.
Focus. I'm serious. I'm serious. I'm serious. I'm serious.
Okay.
He's a, he's a.
Good.
Oh, lovely scene.
Do we have a call?
I don't know.
The quorum being present, I call the twenty twenty-five annual town meeting back to order. We will begin with gas, with Article twenty-eight, gas fee changes.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article updates fees that have not been updated since two thousand and eleven. The updated fees are comparable to those in surrounding towns.
Questions or comments, Article twenty-eight. Seeing none and having no other room to check, we'll move straight forward to voting. Simple majority vote, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article twenty-nine, plumbing fee changes.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article updates fees that have not been updated since two thousand and eleven. The updated fees are comparable to those in surrounding towns.
Questions or comments, Article twenty-nine. Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article thirty, building fee changes.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article updates fees that have not been updated since two thousand and twenty-one. The updated fees are comparable to those in surrounding towns.
Questions or comments, Article thirty. Up here to the microphone.
Heather Friedman, forty-two Cross Street. I just have a quick question about the mechanical fee. It's being changed from a hundred dollars to fifteen per thousand. What is the, per thousand what?
Let's see if we can get an answer. Joe, do you have that, or?
I think I, I think I know it, but, uh, I think it's per thousand of value. Correct? Yes, per thousand of value.
Of the, of the improvement, or?
What, what are we on? Oh.
Hi, Anne Lee, CDMI Director.
Hold on, are we hearing that well enough? Lean in close to the mic, too.
Hi, Anne Lee, CDMI Director. This is, um, fifteen per thousand on the project, the cost of the project.
Not on the overall value of the property or anything like that, it's on the project.
On the project.
Okay, so, in the project, that's an estimate based on just what they give you?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
We clear? Cool. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article thirty will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article thirty-one, weights and measures fee changes.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article updates fees that have not been updated since two thousand and eight. The updated fees are comparable to those in surrounding towns.
Questions or comments, Article thirty-one. Seeing none, again, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion advisory committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article thirty-two, electrical permit fee changes, residential.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article updates fees that have not been updated since two thousand and eleven. The updated fees are comparable to those in surrounding towns.
Questions or comments, thirty-two. Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article thirty-three, electrical permit fee changes, commercial.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article updates fees that have not been updated since two thousand and eleven. The updated fees are comparable to those in surrounding towns.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, again, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article thirty-three will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article thirty-four, appoint committee to study town government structure and recommend. Mr. Paul Sinello.
Joseph Paul Sinello, sixty-five E Street. I moved that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant.
And you have commentary, sir?
Yep. Uh, I've been in Hanover for forty-five years. Whether you're here forty-five years or one day, I believe the purpose of the article in this directory, you got all kinds of talent here. Unfortunately, we didn't talk about it last night, but there's a lot of resource here. And before, it was town management government. We served on different boards, DPW, the Water Commission, and through a lot of us, we contributed a great deal, which I think is, is missing now. It's nothing against town government, and this is absolutely contrary to some of the suggestions from the advisory committee, that this is all about attacking the town manager. It's not. Town manager's got an impossible job. Any resource that you can give him, and the group up here will be worth values. I've talked to a number of people here. In my business, we get two hundred employees, five hundred employees, fifty employees, or two employees. Most important thing is, is written in my handout here, is the employees and the staff and everybody that works. The person that sweeps the floor, to the, to the emergency response people that put their lives on the line, including DPW. When you're out there at ten degrees weather in the middle of the night in a twelve-foot trench, you're putting your life on the line. All this is about it. I never had to lay anybody off or threaten to close the library. All this is about having some resource. And there was a concern about, from one of the advisory members, about their comments and read, if you had my handout, is the reason to pass this article. You know, probably one of the worst times I had was going before the advisory committee, all right? They had a predetermined notion that this is all an attack on government, an attack on an individual here. That's not the case whatsoever. Whether you pass this article or not, we're all part of the community here. Thank you.
Mr. Doctor. Your commentary is next, sir.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
The advisory committee opposes this article and recommends that town meeting votes against the underlying article. Our main concern is that it just is not clear what this article is seeking to accomplish. Three of the petitioners presented to the advisory committee during a public meeting. Each of them provided different explanations of what this article seeks to accomplish. Some of the goals stated were reviewing the Town Manager Act because of disagreements with the current town manager, reforming the disbanded Board of Public Works, reconsidering the importance of PFAS water treatment and mitigation, reevaluating the fire town has entered into with employees, vendors, and third parties, reviewing financial decisions and accounts, and a whole host of other potential goals. When pressed directly, the main petitioner stated that the goal of this study committee would be to determine what to study. By way of background, the Town Manager Act was approved by town meeting in two thousand and nine as a result of a study committee formed by the select board in two thousand and eight. The select board formed a subsequent Town Manager Act review committee in two thousand and sixteen with a detailed charge relating to reviewing and making recommendations for potential updates to the Town Manager Act. The review committee returned their report on April second, two thousand and eighteen, with four specific recommendations that were presented to the two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting. This resulted in part in the dissolution of the Board of Public Works. Each of these study committees required significant work from numerous volunteers and employed staff. The present article differs from past study committees in that there is no clear charge. If a study committee with a clear and direct charge results in significant use of staff resources, it is likely that one without a clear charge would result in even further use of staff resources. As has been explained, Hanover staff are currently stretched to their breaking point and in some instances, beyond. The advisory committee does not see a benefit in forming an amorphous committee to study the question of what needs to be studied. That will certainly use up much of the town's limited staff resources. We're also concerned with the potential makeup of the committee. It is not clear what the benefit would be to limiting one of the members to the small group of current residents who were prior members of the Board of Public Works, which was disbanded seven years ago. It is also not clear what the benefit would be of including the chairs of the Democratic and Republican town political committees into the appointment process. Local town issues are nonpartisan. We do not know of any residents who would like Hanover to perform and behave more like Washington, D.C. The advisory committee does not support forming this study committee because there is no clear goal, it will use up already limited staff resources, and the limitations of the appointments seem to be counterproductive. If town meeting is inclined to support this article, we would recommend at a minimum simplifying the appointments as seven residents, broken down into two each, appointed from the moderator, select board, and school committee, along with one from the town manager.
Mr. Paul Sinello, you've spoken, so I will go to Ms. Harder Bernier next.
I would like to respond.
You will, you will have time. I don't think we're going to be inundated with speakers, so we'll, we'll be able to get back.
Good evening. Kathy Harder Bernier, one forty-three Maplewood Drive, speaking as a resident this evening. Given that there's a motion, a positive motion on the floor right now, I, I'm moving to amend, so that it reads, instead of, the committee shall consist of seven members, one appointed by the town manager, one appointed by the town moderator, one appointed by the select board, one appointed by the school committee. The town clerk shall appoint one member who was a past member of the Board of Public Works, one member appointed by the Hanover Democratic Town Committee, and one member appointed by the Hanover Republican Town Committee. So that it reads, and this is my amendment, excuse me, the committee shall consist of seven members, one appointed by the town manager, two appointed by the town moderator, one appointed by the select board, one appointed by the school committee, one member appointed by the Hanover Democratic Town Committee, and one member appointed by the Hanover Republican Town Committee. In my thirty, and so the basic idea behind the amendment is to take the appointing authority from, away from the town clerk and give it to the town moderator. So, in my thirty-three years here in Hanover, I don't remember the town clerk ever having appointing authority for a member of a committee created by town meeting. It just doesn't seem like a precedent that we should change now just because we know the current town clerk and you're going to be stuck with me for the next three years, and just because you think that I might do the right thing. In fact, as the keeper of the record that should eventually result in an amendment, or could eventually result in an amendment to the Town Manager Act, I think that the town clerk's role as the voice of town meeting before the Massachusetts State Legislature should not be clouded by being vested in an appointee to a committee that might eventually make that recommendation to the town. It's far cleaner if the moderator makes a second appointment to this committee should it pass town meeting. The moderators and the town clerk's roles are important checks and balances for the proper governance of the town of, for the town of Hanover. Let's not muddy the waters.
Just a minute. Thank you, ma'am clerk, essentially eliminating the town clerk appointing one person and having the moderator appoint two instead of one. Mr. Doctor, commentary on the amendment?
Mr. Moderator. The advisory committee opposes the underlying motion to approve the article. In our commentary, we have pointed out that we have concerns with the makeup, and we did recommend that if it was going to be approved, that the town clerk not be an appointing authority. So, to that extent, the advisory committee supports this motion to amend, but we continue to oppose the underlying article.
Questions or comments on the motion to amend? Mr. Mantell, do you want to step to a microphone, please?
Can you make an amendment to the amendment?
You can, but let's hear what you're suggesting before we talk about it.
To, I would like to remove the Democratic Town Committee Chair and the Republican Town Chair and appoint those to the moderator.
I think I would prefer that we dispensed with this amendment, and then I would welcome your amendment in addition to that. So I think we'll stick with Ms. Harder Bernier's amendment, just because it's a little confusing to do both. And once that is dispensed with, I'll hear yours. So you might as well stand right there. Further questions or comments on Ms. Harder Bernier's amendment? Seeing none, simple majority to adopt, again, to summarize, that the town clerk has no appointments and the moderator has two, everything else remaining the same. All those in favor of Ms. Harder Bernier's amendment will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Amended unanimously. Mr. Mantell.
Dan Mantell, sixty-four Paul Road. I would like to change what we just voted on to say, instead of two to the moderator, we do four to the moderator and none to Democratic Town Committee and none to Republic, Republican Town Committee.
So, similar wording to Ms. Harder Bernier's. You, Mr. Mantell, moves to amend by striking the appointments of the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee and increasing the moderator appointments to four?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, any questions or comments on this amendment on the makeup of the committee? Seeing none, simple majority. I'll restate, we already have the amended motion by Ms. Harder Bernier, that's done. And now we're going, Mr. Mantell's is to strike the appointments of Democratic and Republican Town Committees and increase the moderator appointments to four of this committee. We're not debating whether we should have the committee yet or not, just the makeup. All those in favor of the amendment proposed by Mr. Mantell will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, so we are now back to the main motion as amended. All we've done is change how the appointing authority is done. Do we have any other questions from a new speaker before Mr. Paul Sinello is speaking again? Seeing none, Mr. Paul Sinello.
Joseph Paul Sinello, sixty-five E Street. I totally disagree with the advisory chairman's comments. They were total misrepresentations of what I said. I did not have any discussion attacking the town manager and how they decide on contracts. Absolutely not. All this is, is purely to provide, any views here, to be involved, it doesn't take much time. My business, you have an issue. And I do crisis management all the time, especially the crisis we're in, whether we're going to close the library or not. We've never heard of such a thing, all right? You call up Billy Adams, you call up this person, that person, what do you think? You have a lot of ideas. So, it's, all this is about. Thank you.
Further questions or comments, Mr. Henderson?
Steve Henderson, eleven eighteen Hanover Street. I think I have two connected questions. Given the makeup after being amended, what, apart from three members, what would the significant difference be between this and the advisory committee? Because a lot of the, the makeup is now residing with the town moderator, which it is for the advisory committee, I believe. And what would the charge be then that would be different than that with the exception of an additional member appointed by the school committee and an additional member appointed by the select board and one by the town manager? I, I'm just having trouble seeing the distinction between the, the intent behind the two.
We'll seek an answer. I'll provide an initial comment and then come to Mr. Paul Sinello. From the point of view of moderator appointments, I have quite a few appointments to different committees and, you know, different people go to Park and Rec than go to AdCom. So, as long as the intent of the committee is clear, yeah, it's, it's fine to appoint the same appointing authority to multiple committees. But as far as the charge, I'll leave that to Mr. Paul Sinello.
Joseph Paul Sinello, sixty-five E Street. It's more informal. It's not every, people in the town don't have the time that these people apply to it, which is pretty honorable, the time they spend in this, in here. But a lot of times, if you've made some phone calls and talked to ten people or get ideas, it's pretty informal. That's the whole idea of this. That's the way our boards were, when we had the DPW, Water Commission, and we interacted with Victor and a whole number of different people, whether it was Butch Matthews, God bless Ben Cruiser, any of these people. We got a lot done, there was a lot of total resource in there. That's all this is, all right? It's no big deal. Whether this gets passed or not, all we're talking about here is getting some resource. And it's not going to stop anybody from getting involved or making a phone call or input, but this, if you read the advisory committee, the pre-conceived motion when I before was exclusive, they want to exclude you, all right? That's what I feel it's about.
I'll take a question and answer from the advisory committee as well.
Mr. Moderator, so just as to the question of how the current amended motion differs and concerns that the advisory committee has with the appointments, so my understanding, the current amended appointments are one from the town manager, four from the town moderator, one of which have to maybe from the former Board of Public Works, one from the select board, one from the school committee.
That's too many.
And, and to clarify, I, I didn't make the Board of Public Works add on.
Is, is the Board of Public Works in that?
One town manager, four town moderator, one select board, one school committee, one former Board of Public Works. Is this nine nuts? Oh, no, no, and they're gone, right? Yep, that's it.
Is, is the Board of Public Works included?
Yes.
After her amendments?
The Board of Public Works was deleted from my.
Was deleted.
Oh, you were the one appointing the Board of Public Works.
Yeah.
And now you're no longer appointing the Board of Public Works.
Yeah.
I, I'm concerned that I didn't make that clear to the town. Because it was, no, you stay there. On Ms. Harder Bernier's amendment, I'm actually going to figure a way to procedurally open it back up again, because I feel like I just changed from the town clerk appointment to the moderator appointment. I had missed that the town clerk was specifically appointing a former member of the DPW.
A Board of Public Works.
A Board of Public Works, thank you. Former member of the Board of Public Works. In her change, she made it appoint from anywhere, and it may have been unclear that we were specifically removing the reference to the former member of Board of Public Works. So, questionably procedurally okay, but with the consent of the town clerk, I will reopen Ms. Harder Bernier's amendment briefly to clarify to everybody that her amendment is to both forego appointing and having the moderator appoint, but also removing the restriction that that appointment be a former member of the Board of Public Works. So, given that we no longer require a former member of the Board of Public Works, does anyone have any questions or comments on that amendment? So I will ask again if you support Ms. Harder Bernier's amendment with the understanding that it no longer has the specification for a former member of the Board of Public Works. All those in favor of Ms. Harder Bernier's amendment will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries still unanimously. Thank you, sorry for the confusion. I appreciate it, all of a sudden I was counting eight members. So, uh, so I'm back to Mr. Nimaskern on the main motion as amended. Mr. Nimaskern.
Sorry, I was taking a nap. Paul Nimaskern, one fifty-one Kinderwood Lane. I do not support this article, and I believe that if we were to try to want to re-study the town government, I don't think this is the time to do it, given the situation that we're in, based on everything that we spoke about last night and the limited amount of people that we have in our town government, them taking the time to study the government, I think is not the right time. So I, I say no.
Mr. Cianciola.
Mike Cianciola, eighty-one Old Town Way. Good evening, everyone. I'm speaking tonight in support of Article thirty-four, a petition to former resident, a. I'm speaking tonight in support of Article 34, a petition to form a resident-appointed committee to study our town government structure and bring back recommendation next year. This article is about civic responsibility, not personal agendas. It's rooted in the simple idea that every few years we should take a step back and ask, is our government still serving the community as well as it could? The last time Hanover viewed the Town Manager Act was back in 2016. Since then, much has changed, our population, our budget, the range of responsibility the town handles. Just like businesses and nonprofits routinely conduct strategic reviews, our local government should too. I know firsthand this can be done thoughtfully and efficiently. I served on the prior committee that reviewed the Town Manager Act, and I can tell you, most of the work was done by us, the volunteer members. We relied on each other's time and skills, not on excessive support from the town staff. The concern about overburring the staff is understandable, but I believe it's a little overstated. The advisory committee describes this as amorphous proposal, but I ask, what better way to begin a review than by allowing the committee the freedom to ask, what matters most to the residents? To engage with the public, ask questions, define priority, isn't that exactly what we want a community-led review to do? When I was on the Town Manager Act Review Committee, our charge was to review the act, but the direction and focus were ultimately shaped by the committee itself. That flexibility led to thoughtful, targeted recommendations, the same principles can apply here. Most importantly, this article doesn't change anything yet, it simply starts the conversation. It empowers residents to think critically, work collaboratively, and any real change will still come back to the town meeting for a public vote. So let's vote yes on Article 34 and show that we can value reflection, participation, and transparency. Thank you.
Mr. Luko.
Steve Luko, 43 King Hill Road. I serve on your select board, and I'm speaking in support of this article. I think it's a really interesting idea. In my experience on the select board, I've only known the town manager setup of government. I was recently at a leadership conference, a Plymouth County Leadership Conference, with select board members from all of towns across Plymouth County. And some of those towns operate under different forms of government, they're not all town managers, some of them are town administrators. And I was really enlightened and really impressed to hear some of the responsibilities that those select boards have. They have a lot more oversight over the operations of, the day-to-day operations of the town, contracts that are being approved, ARPA grant applications. And it really made me think that if we did have, say, a town administrator form of government would select, the select board and the public maybe been more aware of what was going on. Joe does have an impossible task, it's very challenging, a lot rests on his shoulders. And if a different form of government can spread the burden and provide a little more assistance on those matters, maybe the select board would have realized that an ARPA application hadn't been submitted in all of 2023. It just makes me wonder. So, I support this article to bring some new ideas forward and maybe look at an alternative form of government. I'm not saying we have to do it, but it's worth investigating. Thank you.
Mr. Hoyes.
Good evening, Jim Hoyes, 56 Stone Metal Lane. Speaking as a resident, but one who's worked in the corporate world for 35 years or so, this type of project can be very valuable. But in this case, I don't think it will be. I don't think the timing's right, and I don't think it has very clear objectives, key deliverables, timelines, expectations. And we're at a point where our staff in town is stretched. I see it in the current role I'm helping out with, but I know how it works in the corporate world, and this becomes a big distraction without clear objectives and clear deliverables. So as a resident, I'm very concerned, particularly with new staff coming onboard this year, that if they don't have a chance to get caught up, learn their roles, start delivering on the key objectives of their own job, and start getting sucked into open-ended meetings, it's not going to work out well. And it was based on having been through this personally, whether that's in operating units of companies or leading a large company. The key is getting the purpose, the deliverables, and the key objectives, and I don't see those outlined, and I didn't hear those. I happened to be at the advisory committee meeting when the petitioners spoke, and it stated correctly, it was kind of all over the board on what the objectives were from the three speakers, and that's why I'm very concerned and I don't support this at all.
I will keep hearing new speakers. It wasn't a direct question to the clarity. Mr. Esther Brooks at the top.
Thank you, Caleb Esther Brooks, 67 Washington Street. Really, speaking strongly on either side of this, I guess I can, I can see the point in getting people more involved in the town. I'd like that idea, however, I've served on several committees, I'm no longer on the Historical Commission, but I was for several years, on the Master Plan and Implantation Commission, a committee. I serve on boards outside of the town as well, and the struggle is finding time to do it. As a parent, my time is really, especially in the evenings, it's very, it's very, it's a rare commodity these days. So, you get kind of a, you know, the problem with a committee like this is you don't get as good a representation of the population of the town as you would like, because it excludes a lot of people who have kids who are running around a lot already in the evenings and would love to probably attend school committee meetings and Board of Selectment meetings in Canton, probably would certainly balk at the idea of taking on another, another board, another, another responsibility for the town. So, there's that perspective, and it'll sound like an extra workload as well. On the Historical Commission, we're always trying to get time, time from the town planner, and we rarely ever could, even at the moments that we actually had a town planner while I was on the commission, we couldn't usually get much of their attention, which was much needed for the efforts of that, of that commission. And so I understand that we're pretty stretched on resources as far as personnel goes at the town as well. But I do like the idea of trying to find a way to get more ideas and people involved and to get the opinions and thoughts of people, but I, I wish there was a way we could just encourage people to go to the meetings that we already have, to go to Board of Selectment meetings and School Committee meetings and Planning meetings and present their ideas. This can happen by any resident in the town already and it just doesn't. You know, in the Historical Commission, if we had a resident show up who wasn't having a hearing for their own personal project, I felt like we needed to uncork a bottle of champagne, it happened very rarely, and it would have been awesome to, we loved having people. Ken Green used to show up on occasion, he was probably our biggest fan, and it's, you know, it's sad now that we've lost him, like I said, I'm no longer part of this commission anyway, but it was, it was lonely. We didn't get a lot of attention, if we did, it was usually negative. It would have been great to get some feedback from people, positive or negative or anything, to give us some direction, but we just don't. So, getting another committee together, if it could be done in a way to get a good representation of the town and get some positive ideas, and maybe, I don't really see how exactly it would happen, but Mr. Paul Sinello's put a lot of work into it, so I applaud the effort and the idea and that spirit of getting people involved in the town. I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding how, how could we do it which would represent the town population well and not just end up representing a small group who happen to be able to join this and doesn't get special interests another opportunity to have some focus on our town, our town direction? Thank you.
Mr. Moralia.
Pete Moralia, 710 Center Street, Chairman, Chair of the School Committee. I think what I would recommend-
You're speaking as a resident or as a school committee?
Sorry, I'm speaking as a resident.
Thank you.
I would like to understand, well, what I would suggest is that the petitioners come back and provide a lot more detail here, because we've already got, for the school committee, we've already got a liaison, we've had them in the past, where they're a liaison to the school committee to help us review the budget. So I don't see what added value there would be there. Additionally, you know, there's, if you, you know, if you can see the bags under our eyes, there's, there's plenty, plenty of things coming out of our hide to just be able to meet all the needs. And I don't, and it's also very hard for us to find volunteers. So I don't know how we'd find the additional pool of people to do this. The other specific part I'd like to hear about, if they came back, would be how this is mechanically supposed to work. There are laws, there are rules that we are all subject to. Open meeting law is one of them. So if we have a person who's appointed who's going around talking to all the school committee members, for example, we can be in violation very quickly. So we need to understand how this mechanically works. Are they meeting individually and only one person talks to one school committee member? There's a lot of details that have to come, come forward. Thank you.
Mr. Paul Sinello, I would take that as some sort of a question, so if you'd like to respond to how the committee would operate, feel free to.
I'll answer about the corporations first. I started a company, 40 people, ended up doing $7 million a year in business, Polaroid, General Electric, IBM. I took all the clients away from Waste Management, then they had to buy me out. So, if anybody thinks here corporations are smarter than the entrepreneurs and anybody in this room, that's another thing. Study. I put it in here, because the big thing I kept asking, we don't know what you're studying, we don't know what you're studying, we don't know what you're studying, you don't have an outline. So I put this. Study, investigation, examination, inquire, exploration, research, probe, probing, inspections, extractions, analyzing, attention, so you gotta, you gotta talk to people, you gotta understand what's going on. The teachers, we're talking about, you know, the employees, the teachers, they take the two months off. You know, let's get to the root of it. You get that by discussing things. Thank you.
No, 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 everybody has a right to make their comments. Please keep the commentary down. Ms. O'Connor, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Vanessa O'Connor, 43 Mayflower Circle. I am the Chair of the Select Board, but I'm speaking as a resident. I have a couple of comments, namely concerns with this committee. The first is, one of the comments was, I think from, I forget it was from, but it was, what better way to let the committee begin than to just kind of form their own questions? I think a committee with a scope this broad is really a challenge to effectively accomplish anything, is I can read the objective as put in the Warren article, which is really what we're basing this off of, not kind of commentary around, that people are providing kind of on the spot about what it will do, because that doesn't bind anything. It's to study the state of the town government structure and make a recommendation about changes or to the current, to the current Town Manager Act. And so I think that's just too broad of a mission. I think that it's too broad for us to make a decision on thoughtfully about what we want to be studied and how we want it to be studied. Also, my first attempt at putting a committee together in this town was the Transfer Station Study Committee, and that was really a huge learning curve for me. And a thing I learned very quickly is that even with a clearly defined objective and mission for a committee, it's really confusing to try and figure out what it's supposed to do, how it's supposed to operate, what the form is supposed to be that it reports back and, and kind of what the ultimate goals are. And we were able to have that back and forth with the select board. In a committee that's just being appointed at town meeting in this way, there's really no way to get that feedback and that kind of additional information and context to help make the decision about what kind of recommendation the committee is going to make. And so I don't think this is, there's really a way for this, excuse me, to be done effectively. I also don't think the timeline of doing that in one year is effective. I mean, that transfer station committee, which was really just looking at modernization of the transfer station commit, excuse me, the transfer station, took about two years to make a recommendation to the select board. This is a much broader and less, less clarified scope, so I think that would take a significantly longer period of time to do. Additionally, I think one of the comments from Mr. Paul Sinello is that anything that the committee proposes will ultimately come back to a public vote. Maybe downstream that's true, maybe if it gains some momentum and rolls on and new things become, or kind of someone picks up the ball when this committee ends, that happens. But as this committee is drafted, it's just making a recommendation. I don't totally understand what direct vote it would result in, that the residents would get to make a decision on. And then my, I also agree with Mr. Hoyes' comment that now is not really the time for this, we have other focuses right now, we have other priorities. And my final note is that I, I think a lot of the concerns Mr. Paul Sinello brought up, and even the ones that the AdCom Chair identified as being what they understood the concerns to be, are valid, but I think the more effective study that we need to do is I think we need to shift our perspective from like, is the Town Manager Act working, to how are other towns putting their resources or using their resources to effectively, to govern? So, right, I don't know what percentage of another town's budget is going to different services, fire, police, schools, and that's a really tough thing to quantify, because all of these, as all of these towns have evolved over hundreds of years, they've all put different buckets in with different positions. So there's overlap in what these towns do. So I think the most effective use of resources would be to find a way to kind of look at things and kind of find a level playing field, to see how we're performing as opposed to other towns, to see where we can find efficiencies, redirect capital, redeploy our resources. So I think that there is a committee to be had, and I think there's some thought to be put into this, but I think this is the wrong way to go about it, and I think we just need a little bit more thought into what it looks like, what its objectives are, what its timeline is going to be, and what the most effective way is for it to accomplish the valid goals that it has. So, thank you.
Mr. Henderson.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, but I think there was-
No, you were first, actually.
Okay, I didn't know if that was, was it a new speaker? Should I?
Go ahead, Mr. Henderson, please.
Okay, sorry.
Unless you don't sound like you're ready to close the floor, so she will get to speak.
Steve Henderson, 1118 Hanover Street. So I, I rose the first time with a question, and now, having heard that and having heard the additional commentary, I'm rising against, because I, what I've heard so far hasn't really enhanced my understanding of what's happening. What I would see as a more, if, what I see happening with this is we are looking at the actions of town government, which every one of us in the room can do, they are public materials. We are thinking about how they've impacted the town, which we can all do, we do that regularly, and we're bringing them back to town meeting in a year to present them to town meeting to try to make change, which is something that any one of us can do with a motion, to try to make that change. In addition, with that, we have, the article has the, you know, bringing together a committee, which townspeople could certainly talk to one another to be able to accomplish the same purpose. I don't see any reason inherent in it to form a committee around that, around that particular purpose. It seems like something that everyone can, can do on their own. And in addition, in between when I first rose and when I, when I, when I stood up now, what I have heard being added to the list by, by various places was the elements of kind of grievance creeping into that. And I think that, 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 for me at least, when I was thinking about the formation of a committee, didn't seem like a, like a particularly auspicious start to, to a committee for that. What I, what I might suggest, if I, if I were to do so, would be if we're looking to bring more people into the, the process, then I would think that a, and I don't know to what degree this is allowed, because I haven't particularly looked at it, but an expansion of the two existing boards that are on the stage right now, you know, might be a more reasonable and less sort of creating something brand new out of whole cloth than that, but that's more speculation than anything else, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't support it. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson, I do withstand corrected. I had forgotten you had spoken early in the question, and that's why you were deferring. My apologies, please go ahead.
I think you have a thing for the Delaney's at 1508 Broadway. Lauren Delaney, 1508 Broadway. I'll keep it brief, because I know that most of us are probably ready to vote, but just wanted to make three similar points, but in a very, hopefully more pithy way. One, Mr. Hoyes, you took a lot of the words right out of my mouth. To me, this just really lacks the clear goals, outcomes, deliverables, metrics, you know, what exactly is happening? Not sure if everyone got this packet, but it does not clarify things for me. Second, the word informal was used to describe this, so then why formalize? In my opinion, the better way to get people involved is to show up to meetings regularly, not just at the end of each season. And then third, I don't know if everyone saw this, but the first thing that stood out to me was the front cover and the back cover. You mentioned exclusion and why that was one of your impetuses for starting this committee. Yet the cover and the front, on the front and the back reflect a homogeneous white male representation of civic life. Well, it powerfully illustrates democratic participation, using it today, especially on a town meeting proposal, signals exclusion or lack of representation to people of color, women, or other represented groups. That, to me, should be the number one reason why we turn down this proposal. I usually don't stand up and make vulnerable comments like this, but I can't not say something. So, thank you.
Eric Ron, 70 Heatherditch Way.
Eric Ron, 70 Heatherditch Way. On this article, outside of what everybody else said, I do find it attractive in just the simplicity of it, and other people have kind of seconded that, in that, you know, if you just read that it says, "Point a committee to study current state of the town government structure, make a recommendation at the next annual town, town meeting, bring changes to the current act," and so forth. I don't, I don't see how that can be so bad, is getting together a group of citizens to positively look forward, and I have agreed, I do agree with the modifications to the appoint- And I have agreed, I do agree with the modifications to the appointments. I think that's important, but that's, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority? Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see, get back up again.
Lauren Delaney, 1508 Broadway. I'd like to make a motion to cease discussion.
We de facto have done that, so I think we'll just do it.
Ryan's not here tonight to do that, so.
Thank you. Seeing that I have nobody else standing at the microphone, I'll, discussion is ceased, and we will move to voting on Mr. Paul Sinello's motion as amended. It is his original main motion to accept the article as printed in the warrant. The only amendments were due to the makeup of the committee. Simple majority vote. All those in favor of Mr. Paul Sinello's motion will say aye? Opposed, nay? Motion fails. Article 35. "Amend general bylaws, traffic islands, town gardens."
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town not accept this article and take no further action. The petitioners are no longer pursuing this article and are able to address their needs through the existing bylaws.
And we'll come down here. You can bend it down, sort of.
Sorry. Allison Foley, 178-
Actually, you really should bend it down. It's really hard to do.
Allison Foley, 178 Meadowbrook Road. I just want to say, appearing before town meeting has never been on my bucket list, so. I am currently on the Board of Directors of the Walnut Hill Garden Club. We maintain 19 traffic islands here in town, a few gardens on town properties, and the gardens at the Stetson House. We do this at no cost to the town. In recent years, we have been the fortunate recipients of grants from the Hanover Cultural Council to help to free the costs. When I first asked about signs with our name on it for the gardens, I was told it violated town bylaw. I set to work, I set about to work to change this. I appeared before AdCom and bylaw committees. Recently, the town manager reviewed the bylaws with the building inspector and found that our small temporary signs were in fact not a violation. We have a permit for our signs. I would like to thank Mr. Colangelo, Mr. Stack, Mr. Doctor and Committee, Mr. Grund and Committee for their assistance, and I have a special thank you to our town clerk, Ms. Harder Bernier, for helping me navigate this process.
Further questions or comments on Article 35? Seeing none, this is the first negative motion. So you're voting with the, if you're voting aye, you're voting with the advisory committee to basically do nothing. All those in favor of the motion will say aye? Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Article 36. Oh, I have to read the title first. Article 36, "Amend zoning bylaws, insert new section 6.17.0, multi-family overlay district." Ms. Brugnoli.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Good evening. Miriam Brugnoli, 226 Latchmont Lane, Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board moves to refer Article 36 to the Planning Board for further study. Pursuant to Mass General Laws, MGL, Chapter 40A, Section 5 of the Zoning Act, the Planning Board of the Town of Hanover held a public hearing on Monday, March 17th, 2025, at 7:30 PM, by person and Zoom in the second floor hearing room of Town Hall 550, Hanover Street, Hanover, Mass. Public hearing notices were published in the Hanover Mariner two weeks about, before the public hearing meeting, which was March 5th and March 12th. So this brings us back to the MBTA Housing Act, which we've been discussing now for well over a year. In February of 2025, State Auditor Diana DeZelio determined that the MBTA Communities Act is an unfunded mandate for cities and towns. In a letter to State Leaders, the Auditor's Division of Local Mandates set a review of the law, determined that it imposes direct service or cost obligations on local communities, but does not provide a funding mechanism for compliance with its provisions. Simply put, when the MBTA Housing Act was passed, the legislature did not allocate monies to communities to cover the cost associated with building, and then the long-term cost associated once those apartments are occupied. Her office said it is conducting a review of the financial effects of the MBTA Communities Act that will outline the costs incurred by communities. Such a review will also include the required fiscal impact statement required by the Economic Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which the Superior Court Judges demanded when the Milton case was heard. To my knowledge, that study has not been done. Auditor DeZelio's review was prompted by a request from the Town of Rantham. They asked for an exemption for the MBTA Act due to a lack of funding from the state. So for funding, we're talking about infrastructure, police, fire, schools, border health, DPW, all departments that would certainly be affected by 977 apartments. What is the number nine? Thank you. Following the auditor's determination, Hanover filed a request for exemption from this law with the auditor's office. So I've been asked why the Planning Board wants to refer this article rather than present a motion to vote no or, or yes. It's my understanding that communities who have voted no, and there are communities who have voted no, Noah Wilmarshfield, will not, may not be eligible for exemptions for the unfunded mandate. That's, that hasn't been totally clear yet, but the auditor's department is weighing that. So if we were to vote no on this, the possibility that we then, we wouldn't even be able to ask as, ask it as an unfunded mandate is real. So by asking to have you all refer it back to us is really the sensible course of action to take at this time. And it will allow the Planning Board to monitor information coming out of the auditor's office, and then bring back to this body a definitive approach for moving forward.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
The Advisory Committee supports the motion of the Planning Board. This article would implement a multi-family overlay district as required by the MBTA Communities Act. The MBTA Communities Act requires designated municipalities to enact multi-family zoning as of right. There has been extensive litigation regarding the act, which is ongoing. The most recent development is that the State Auditor has determined the act constitutes an unfunded mandate, and multiple municipalities are involved in lawsuits with the state regarding potential cost offsets or mitigation. If town meeting rejects this article, there are concerns the town would be less competitive in certain grant applications and could ultimately lose potential funding. If town meeting approves this article, there are concerns we could miss out on any future court-ordered funding as a result of the unfunded mandated determination. There are also concerns about the ability of the town to accommodate significant additional development without access to additional water resources. Given the uncertainty, it seems the most prudent approach would be to neither reject nor approve this article, instead referring the article to the Planning Board for further study.
Questions or comments?
Good evening. Anne Roselle, 147 Pleasant Street. Oh, I'm sorry, were you first?
Up top first.
As a resident, parent of two children in our public schools, a spouse of a veteran, and with a senior citizen living in our home, I'm here to urge fellow residents to send this back to committee. Hanover is already in a position where we need a budget override just to maintain our current levels of service across departments. This is not the time to take on additional burdens. Last year, I stood before you and spoke about this very issue. I shared my professional experience as a teacher in another town, where an influx of new students from rapid residential growth led to crowded classrooms, stretched resources, and a decline in the quality of education. We cannot allow Hanover to face the same consequences. I'm referring to the Naval Air Base. It was, they had, the Navy had turned it back to the towns. It was supposed to be for commercial property. However, hundreds of residential apartments were built instead, before the Navy could stop it, and the influx came to Weymouth. Our class sizes were 30 class, 30 students to a class. It was just overwhelming. As a parent and educator, I see firsthand the strain our schools are under. Our teachers are doing more with less every year, and yet we're being asked to consider significant zoning changes that will bring more families, more students, and more pressure without any guaranteed support or infrastructure to handle it. Meanwhile, our police, fire, senior services, library and veterans programs are already underfunded and under threat of significant cuts as, if not total, total closure. How can we possibly consider opening the door to large-scale residential development when we can't even fully fund the critical services we have with our current population? Even the State Auditor has determined that this act is unfunded mandate. The state is asking us to make zoning changes without giving us the money to support the consequences of those changes. And while some say rejecting this article could impact our eligibility for grants, there's also the risk that approving it now could disqualify us from future court-ordered financial relief if the lawsuits rule in the favor of municipalities. We are being told to make permanent change with major implications based on unclear legal guidance and no promise of funding. Once this residential housing is built, it's permanent and cannot be undone, while grants are not permanent. Our town's water resources are already strained. Without new water resources, how can we responsibly support a potential surge in population? I believe in a future for Hanover that includes responsible, affordable housing. But I also believe we have a responsibility to our children, our seniors, veterans, and our first responders. This is not the time to make a decision with such wide-reaching consequences. I respectfully urge the town meeting to reject, reject and send it back to the committee, at the very least, referring it back to the Planning Board for further study. Thank you.
Down front? Go ahead.
My name is Caroline Ledversis. I live at 188 Ledgewood, and I want to make a comment. I don't quite understand, I actually do a lot of shopping over near Hanover Crossing, and on several occasions, I almost got rear-ended quite a bit, because there's traffic congestion over there, multiple car accidents. I come out of Market Basket, and there's ambulances there, rescues, and all kind of chaos with the Hanover Crossing development. Now, can you clarify this new development? Where is it gonna be and how many units? Is it similar to the one at, at the Market Basket? Because I don't quite hear the details.
So I will say one thing before I can come back to the Planning Board. They're moving to refer it back for further study. So there is, I guess, some nominal amount, but nobody's saying that we should approve it. They're saying we should go back and study it some more.
What actually does nominal mean? Does that mean hundreds, or what does that mean?
No, some, there's some estimate, but we're not actually approving anything. If we were to be making a positive vote, you had said it's a pretty large development? Could be built.
Is it bigger than the Hanover Crossing development, which is like chaos over there?
Let me see if I can get an answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Brugnoli. While we are voting on a motion to refer, if this was going forward and, and there was a project, what would be the maximum size the project could be?
Minimum, 750.
Minimum, 750.
750.
And maximum? Okay, that's fine. Minimum 750 to be compliant with the state law, basically?
Yes, that's what the state law has asked us to build.
And how many units are at the Hanover Crossing total right now?
297, I think.
So this is three times the size?
No, no, it's not a back and forth. You asked a question, I got you an answer on the question.
Okay, I have another question.
Well, if you could pause for a second.
I will, thank you.
Would anybody else like to ask a question? Are you looking to speak a second time?
I just wanted to say, in the reading, it was 15 units per acre, at 60-something acres, so it was about 1,000 apartments.
Mr. Grund.
Eric Grund, 70 Heritage Way. Just a simple, simple question. So are we gonna be voting yea or nay on referring the article to the Planning Board for further study? Is that what we're doing?
That is what we are voting on, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I speak to that woman's last comment?
Certainly.
It's 50, it's 15 units on 50 acres. Thank you.
Okay, so the-
Do you have a second question, ma'am?
So the clarification is, there's gonna be 15 units, which, I'm, I'm not quite clear of where this is gonna be.
So again, we are voting on a motion to refer back to committee.
Okay, I understand that, but not being clear.
But if we were considering it, and I would highly recommend that you attend future Planning Board meetings or follow their proceedings, because that would be way more detail.
Okay.
But if there was going to be a positive, it would be a minimum, according to Ms. Brugnoli, of 750 units.
Okay, so let me make a comment on that. As a resident of, of Hanover at 188 Ledgewood, the fire department and the police department are strapped. How are they going to manage the traffic in front of these complexes when they're already strapped? And, and I would recommend that you decline this for safety reasons of the town, because the police and the fire department are already strapped. Okay, so we need to keep the town safe. And I told you, I have a son that has autism, who actually takes walks safely around the neighborhood. In the fire department, it's taking care of my son, and I thank them. But we need to respect the first responders of this town, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson.
Steve Henderson, 1118 Hanover Street. I just had one really quick question about the, the referring it back to the committee. Have there been other communities that have, have voted that way? And are there legal ramifications for a vote that, for that vote? I know that there, I know that there would be presumably if it was voted yes, or if it was voted no, but have there been communities that have engaged with that, that have, that have had a legal ramification for a referral?
I think I'll first come to town council and see if we have any, do we know any? Have any comments on that? As far as communities that have purely voted to refer, has the state taken any action or withheld grants or done anything?
Well, no. In, in fact, as Mr. Colangelo reminded me, that, that's what this town did last year. We refer, we referred it for, so, and nothing has, nothing has occurred to us, to Hanover. And it, if I can further answer, it is the safest route to take to defer it. Rather than outright rejecting it or accepting it, accepting it, then you're, you're in it for good. Rejecting it could lead to some negative ramifications.
But as yet, we haven't seen any repercussions for not doing anything.
No.
Mr. Moderator, may I speak to that also?
Yes, Ms. Brugnoli.
If, those of you who were here last year, if you remembered, we referred it because of the Milton case. The Milton case had not yet-
Stay on the microphone.
Sorry. Last year, we referred the article back to the Planning Board, because we were waiting to hear about the Milton case that had not yet been decided. It has been since, and we're all working on that. This, I don't know of, I don't, many towns are asking for exemptions, as did we. We did receive a letter saying that our exemption had been received, and, you know, they were aware of it. But I don't know of any town that has asked for an exemption that has been penalized. Governor Healy, because of this, and, and so many, so many lawsuits are coming from many, many towns about this, she has extended the deadline for compliance to, I believe it's July 14th, that every town is supposed to comply by then. Who knows if she'll extend it further now that this unfunded mandate has come forward? That's something we're gonna have to wait and see. But if she doesn't, and the unfunded mandate information is not set in stone, I don't know what we'll do then. We'll have to just, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what we'll do.
Sir, this gentleman behind you, are you waiting? Please, go ahead.
Ed Spooner, 35 Studley Lane. Just a point of clarity. So this, this is to vote on if we're gonna refer back to the Planning Board or not?
Correct.
So what would a no vote, what would that cause if we would, we-
If, if you wanted to just vote no.
Then what does that do, though?
You would have to vote no against referring.
Right. Right.
And then make a motion to vote no.
Okay, so...
So, the first vote is on the motion to refer.
Right.
If that gets defeated, then somebody is free to make another motion.
Okay, I just wanted to clear.
Yeah, no, it's a good point. It's not always clear. Mr. Nimiskern.
I'd like to move the question, please.
I'm sorry, you are?
I'm Paul Nimiskern, 151 Kendall Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Nimiskern.
I thought I'd get through it, make a motion to move it.
Mr. Nimiskern has moved the question, requires a two-thirds vote to cut off debate. All those in favor of the motion to move the question will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are moved unanimously. So, now we come to the motion to refer. The planning board's motion to refer is a simple majority vote. All those in favor of the motion to refer back to the planning board will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. And we move to Article 37, amend zoning bylaw, Section 10, purpose and applicability. Ms. Brignoli.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Miriam Brignoli, 226 Latchmont Lane, Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board moves to refer Article 37 to the Planning Board for further study. Pursuant to Mass General laws, MGL Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Zoning Act, the Planning Board of the Town of Hanover held a public hearing on Monday, March 17, 2025, at 7:30 PM, in person and by Zoom in the second-floor hearing room at Hanover Town Hall, 550 Hanover Street, Hanover, Mass. Public hearing notices were published in the Mariner, the Hanover Mariner, on March 5 and March 12, 2025. Articles 36 and 37 are companion articles. Article 37 should be referred to the Planning Board for further study based on the rationales that I presented in my commentary on Article 36.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
The Advisory Committee supports the motion of the planning board. This is basically the same as the last article. It just affects a different portion of the zoning bylaws.
Further questions or comments?
Ann Rosell, 147 Pleasant Street. I ditto my previous statement.
Mr. Nimiskern.
Paul Nimiskern, 151 Kendall Lane. I'd like to move the question.
In this case, I think that motion is unnecessary. I do not see further questions or comments. If there were people standing at the mics, I would probably reject your motion. So, we'll move right forward to voting. Article 37 requires a simple majority vote to refer it back to the planning board for further study. All those in favor of the planning board's motion to refer will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 38, appropriate funds, police cruisers, yeah, police cruisers.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate $160,000 from Certified Free Cash for the purposes set forth in this article. This article will replace and equip two existing police department cruisers. The department has historically replaced three cruisers each year as part of their established vehicle replacement schedule, but have dropped to replacing two cruisers recently, given our budget challenges. Frontline cruisers are used almost constantly and last for about three years. This is a high-priority capital expense, and delaying the cruiser vehicle replacement schedule further will ultimately cost the town more than the replacement costs through excessive maintenance and repair costs.
Questions or comments?
No comments.
Okay. You have to identify again.
I will, thank you. I know the drill. My name is Caroline Ledversis, and I live at 188 Ledgewood Drive. Okay? I'd like to make a comment. My son, Daniel, who lives with me part-time, has a LoJack on his ankle. And when he occasionally decides to go wander out in the dark, which he doesn't do that often, the procedure is that I need to call the police so they can locate his LoJack around town. So, I want to make a comment. How can we keep kids like my son safe and also kids in the town safe when we don't even have enough of policed to come to my house when I need help? Can you explain that?
Ma'am, we are discussing replacing...
Okay, so I want to make a comment. I don't think there is enough police available to keep my son safe when I need to call them, because I have actually lived through the experience myself.
Ma'am, I appreciate your support for the police department, and I'm sure the police department appreciates their support.
And the fire department.
But the question before us is whether or not we are buying two additional police cruisers, which I presume you support.
I'm making a comment. I'm not supporting anything until I hear further details. And if you want to explain, I would appreciate it.
So, the question that you're asking is not relevant to buying two police cruisers. And so, I do have to stay on topic.
Okay, okay.
You're welcome to come to a select board meeting.
I'm able to make a comment, because I live here in this town.
I appreciate the comment.
And I appreciate you listening to me, because my points are valid.
They are. They absolutely are. And I would also encourage you to talk further with the select board about your concerns.
I prefer not to, because I'm busy taking care of my son.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Under Article 38. Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee on Article 38 will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 39, appropriate funds, police firearms.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate $60,000 from Certified Free Cash for the purposes set forth in this article. This article will replace the police department's sidearms that are over 10 years old and require replacement. Over the past 10 years, manufacturing and technological changes have made vast improvements to firearms, optics, and ammunition which enhance reliability, accuracy, and ultimately officer-public safety.
Questions or comments, Article 39. Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carries unanimously. Article 40, Peg Access and Cable Related Fund.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate $450,000 from the Peg Access and Cable Receipts Reserve Fund for the purposes set forth in this article. This article appropriates funds from the town, funds the town receives from a cable operator franchise agreement to the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund. These funds will be used to support Hanover community television and related activities such as personnel, equipment, training, and educational classes in partnership with Hanover High School. We want to highlight the decreasing revenue trend as more residents move away from cable packages and instead towards streaming services. As this revenue decreases in the future, the costs will need to be either covered through the general fund operating budget, covered through some other revenue source, or cut through a service reduction.
Questions or comments, Article 40. Seeing none, again, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 41, set limits on revolving funds.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article sets spending limits for revolving accounts. Revolving accounts are used to collect fees and revenue for a specific purpose and then cover related expenses. The proposed limits have not changed from last year.
Questions or comments, Article 41, up top.
Heather Friedman, 42 Cross Street. So, these are increasing the limits?
I'm sorry?
So, this article is increasing the limits?
Is it increasing or are the limits staying the same?
The proposed limits have not changed from last year.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion, advisory committee, on Article 41 will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 42, appropriate funds, Ken Green Preservation of Historical Documents.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article is funded as a historical project, and there are $1,263,387 of CPA funds currently available for that purpose. As a reminder, CPA funds cannot be used towards the operating budget. The advisory committee met with the CPC and supports this project. We defer to the CPC for further description of the project and Ken Green.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammerhook Drive, Community Preservation Committee. The committee moves that the town vote to accept Article 42 as printed in the town meeting warrant. As required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, a public hearing on this article with due notice was conducted by the committee on January 14, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the town hall via Zoom in person. This application was submitted to the Community Preservation Committee by the town manager and the director of communications in the amount of $10,000 during the fiscal year 2025 funding application period. This article was named in honor of the late Ken Green, who was a devoted and native Hanover resident, volunteer, and family man who had a special interest in presenting, preserving historical town documents. This project will involve the restoration of historical town documents presently located in the basement of Town Hall, Salmon School, and in the public library. The documents under consideration include ledgers, maps, historical reports dating back to the 1800s, various municipal records, and genealogical sources. The committee moves that the town vote to accept this article.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. We're voting on the motion of the advisory committee, obviously strongly endorsed by Community Preservation Committee. All those in favor of the motion of the advisory committee will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 43, appropriate funds, trail improvement projects.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This article is funded as an open space project, and there are $943,830 of CPA funds currently available for that purpose. As a reminder, CPA funds cannot be used towards the operating budget. The advisory committee met with the CPC and supports this project. We defer to CPC in description of the project.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammerhook Drive, Community Preservation Committee. The committee moves that the town vote to accept Article 43 as printed in the town meeting warrant. And as required by Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, a public hearing on this article was held with due notice on January 14, 2025, at Town Hall via Zoom in person. This application was submitted to the CPC by the Open Space Committee in the amount of $18,500 during fiscal year 2025. This project will involve the use of CPA funds to repair and maintain and build structures, including timber boardwalks for the many miles of hiking trails in Hanover under open space jurisdiction.
Mr. Thomas.
Hal Thomas, 854 Broadway, co-chair of the Open Space Committee. The Open Space Committee has been in existence for about 30 years, and one of our primary objectives is to have public access to our trails and have them accessible with boardwalks, bridges, et cetera. Over the, that 29 years that we've been around, we've built many boardwalks, bridges. Some of those are in need of repair. Some trails are in need of new boardwalks. This money would go to Trails on the Frenchess Stream Trail, Folly Hill, the Firehouse Trail off of Broadway, and Chapman's Landing Trail, which is on the Indian Head River. We, as the Open Space Committee, have no budget. We depend solely on grants through the CPC and elsewhere to fund these projects, and I urge that you approve this. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Ma'am?
My name is Caroline Ledversis. I live at 188 Ledgewood. Just a comment, and my point of view is I realize the beauty of Hanover is important to people, but safety and other resources, in school, in special ed teachers, are more important. Amen.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carries unanimously. Article 44, Appropriate Funds Affordable Housing Trust.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate $172,738 from the Community Housing Reserve Fund to be transferred to the Hanover Affordable Housing Trust as set forth in this article. This article is a routine housekeeping article to transfer funds into the Affordable Housing Trust. This will enable the Affordable Housing Trust to act promptly in order to make acquisitions related to affordable housing. As a reminder, CPA funds cannot be used towards the operating budget.
Mr. Scarpelli.
Bill Scarpelli, 40 Hammerhook Drive, Community Preservation Committee. As required by Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, the committee met on January 14, 2025, at 7:00 PM in person and in Zoom at the town hall. These funds are just a simple transfer. They will support the mission of the Affordable Housing Trust in the goals outlined in the town's master plan and housing production plan. The Community Preservation Committee recommends that the town vote to accept this article.
Questions, comments, Article 44. Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor of the... Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Lucio.
Steve Lucio, 43 King Hill Road. Speaking as a member of the select board, not for the board, but just for myself, I also serve on the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board. And with the funds that the trust fund has, we've established a few programs that are there to help Hanover residents. We have a rental assistance program that can help people remain in Hanover after they no longer have their own home. We also have a septic repair program to help residents improve failing septic systems. CPC money that the Affordable Housing Trust has is designated to create affordable housing in Hanover. Whether the funds remain in CPC or in the trust's account, they have to go to create housing. The only difference is if CPC holds onto the money, there's an approval process where an application has to be filed, and it has to be, the spending of the money has to be approved by this body, by town meeting. I completely trust the board members on the trust and trusting them with the CPC funds as we've been doing. But just to give you a full accounting, as of our last April, the meeting in April, there were $2.3 million on account, and the trust is looking at a project close to, adjacent to the Legion Housing. I'm not sure if everybody is aware of that, but just for full disclosure, at some point, those funds could be used to create more housing, senior affordable housing in Hanover. And just so everybody is aware, that is the intent of the funds, and moving them to the trust. And the trust can move that money and spend that money, and the decision may not come back to this body at that time. But I do support this article. Will go to good use.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, this requires a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion under Article 44 will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 45, accept Chapter 90 road grant monies.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town accept this article as printed in the warrant. This is a routine housekeeping article that authorizes the town manager to accept Chapter 90 funds as allocated by the state legislature for the highway improvements in the town. Town uses these funds primarily to repair and maintain our approximately 87 miles of local public roadways. We anticipate receiving approximately $519,000 in fiscal year 26. However, the actual amount we end up with is determined by the state legislature. It is important to note that this Chapter 90 funding does not adequately cover the cost of fully maintaining the road system within Hanover, and additional funding will be needed in future years for major road repair and paving.
Questions or comments, Article 45. Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So carries unanimously. Article 46, appropriate funds, asphalt box.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We move that the town vote to appropriate $65,000 from Certified Free Cash for the purposes set forth in this article. This article will allow DPW to complete longer-lasting and more durable road repairs that minimize the need for repeated patching. Currently, DPW crews conduct small asphalt repairs using cold patch material. These cold patches are a temporary solution that often fail prematurely due to their inability to bond effectively with existing pavement. The proposed asphalt box provides the ability to perform hot mix asphalt road repairs further into the season by keeping the material at optimal temperature for transport and navigation. the material at optimal temperature for transport and application. Over time, this will lead to cost savings in labor and materials, improved operational efficiency, and safer road conditions for all users.
Questions, comments, Article forty-six. Seeing none, simple majority. All those in favor of the Advisory Committee's motion will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So carries unanimously. Which brings us to Article forty-seven. Before we get, uh, down the path on Article forty-seven, I do ask for the meeting to, uh, thank, uh, take a moment to appreciate the work done by the Advisory Committee. They go through every question on the warrant and provide a great deal of insight and commentary to us and allow us to make our own decisions, but with a lot more information than we might otherwise have. It's a lot of work. If you're interested, I've always looking for volunteers to be considered. Last year was pretty exciting. I think I had fourteen people that put their name in the ring. It's awesome. A lot of great people, actually. I wasn't able to appoint. But, uh, it's an important committee, and I hugely appreciate their work. I would also remind everybody that the town goes to the polls on May seventeenth from eight AM until six PM here at Hanover High School for all of the, uh, the candidates that are up for election, as well as the override question for the raising the levy limit that you've, uh, heard discussed at length last night. So with that, we move to Article forty-seven, appropriate funds, dump truck slash plow.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Doctor.
We finish with a long one. We move that the sum of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars be appropriated to be used set forth in this article, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, is hereby authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter forty-four of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, any prior vote of the town that authorizes the borrowing of money, less any such premium applied to the payment of the cost and issuance of such bond or notes, may be applied to the payment of cost approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. This article uses debt through the Water Enterprise Fund to replace a frontline two thousand and six International Work Star seventy-five-hundred dump truck. This vehicle has severe corrosion to the dump body and frame, and mechanical components such as the transmission and suspension have required frequent repairs in the past few years. As the truck continues to age, repair costs are increasing, reliability is decreasing, and unexpected breakdowns are becoming more common. This is particularly challenging during winter storms when plowing is critical to ensure safe travel for residents, school buses, and emergency vehicles. The primary use of this vehicle is to support water main repairs. Large dump trucks are one of the most essential and versatile vehicles in the DPW fleet, as they are used year-round to haul gravel, sand, asphalt, and debris, support roadway repairs, and assist in storm cleanups. This vehicle replacement will not only improve the efficiency and reliability of DPW operations, but will also result in long-term cost savings. Older vehicles require frequent repairs, are less fuel-efficient, and have higher operational costs. A newer model will be more dependable, meet modern fuel efficiency and emission standards, and reduce maintenance expenses over time. Maintaining a well-equipped fleet also minimizes the need for expensive emergency vehicle rentals or outsourcing work at a higher cost.
Questions or comments, Article forty-seven. Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds majority to borrow. All those in favor of the motion of the Advisory Committee will say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion achieves the necessary two-thirds. If anybody would like to question the count. And I'll go to Mr. Henderson.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Henderson.
Uh, motion to dissolve the town meeting for twenty twenty-five.
I, I, do I have a second? All those in favor of dissolving the town meeting?
Aye.
Aye. We are dissolved. Thank you, sir.